Good morning, everybody. This is the Wednesday, February 16th, 2022 morning session of the Portland City Council. Good morning, Kealan. Please call the roll.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Hardisty.
Here.
Maps.
Wheeler.
Here. Under Portland City Code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference. And the city has made several avenues available to the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, eGovPDX, www portlandoregon.gov slash video, and Channel 30. The public may always provide written testimony to the council by emailing our incredible council clerk at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact, as well as to promote physical distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you all for your patience, your flexibility, and your understanding as we manage through this difficult situation to conduct the city's business. Good morning, legal counsel. We'll hear the rules of order and decorum.
Good morning, Mayor and council. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at www portland.gov slash council slash agenda contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware all council meetings are recorded. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Linley. Always great to see you in the morning. That puts us in position now to do communications. First up, first individual, please. Item number 97. I'm sorry, 87. Thank you.
Request of Dee White to address council regarding the Water Bureau's lead problem and lack of urgency.
Good morning. Dee, are you unmuted?
All right, here I am.
There you are. We can hear you now.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dee White, and I am with Portland Advocates for Lead-Free Drinking Water. We have been coming to the city with concerns over Portland Water Bureau's lead problem unbelievably for four years. For four years, we have pointed out the Bureau's troubling data and their lack of urgency and meaningful action, sharing with all of you how similar cities use best-practice approaches to minimize lead at the tap and protect public health. Today, we thought citizens would like to hear where we are now. We are sorry and sad to report our city and state water officials have been noncommittal and grossly unresponsive to ongoing high lead levels in our water, while they have been fully engaged with wordplay and changing their messaging in response to our concerns. In other words, Portland Water Bureau is still egregiously convincing the public that our water is safe, while in tens of thousands of cases, they deliver water to homes, schools, and businesses with disproportionately higher and unsafe levels of lead than any other city in our region. To set the record straight, the levels on this bar chart are not a comparison of home plumbing. It's an apples-to-apples comparison of how effective treatment has been to reduce lead in customer tap water. And in Portland Water Bureau's case, which is the tallest bar on this chart, how much more obvious is it that Portland has badly and sadly failed with their treatment method and public health policy when it comes to urgently minimizing the unsafe levels of lead in our water? It's completely understandable, if you don't likely know this, because even drinking water advocates such as myself didn't know, because we weren't told. Here's the bottom line. Portland Water Bureau leaders made a flawed choice decades ago to implement partial treatment, and this policy has for over 20 years exposed generations of Portlanders to an invisible, tasteless, and potent neurotoxin. Today, tens of thousands of Portlanders are at risk of being exposed to lead in water at levels that are the highest in 20 years. We hope that by sharing this information with the public today, the city of Portland will move forward swiftly and robustly to protect our children's developing brains. This is an emergency and should be treated as such. Any questions?
Thank you, Dee. I'm not seeing any questions. Next individual, please. Kealan, item number 88.
Request of Portland Advocates for Lead-Free Drinking Water to address council regarding the Water Bureau's lead problem and lack of urgency.
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me? Great. Kealan, could you please put up the graph, the graphic of the LCR history? Thank you. Good morning. I'm here. I'm here on behalf of drinking water advocates. In October last year, PWB learned of excessive lead in drinking water levels, again exceeding the allowable federal limit. We had asked Commissioner Maps for filters last spring. You all, all of you commissioners, in September. And then we escalated our request in December after learning of the city's expenses. Just last week, the Bureau held a first meeting that was low advertised and very low attended. First and foremost, we came because we hope to hear about a free filters program since the Bureau is not sharing this with the public. We also hope the Bureau would better explain lead in water, but people left confused. Here's the takeaway: Is our water safe to drink? And when I say water, we always refer to the drinking water that's delivered to our taps. Portland's consistently high lead levels far surpass region cities like Seattle. Oh, I'm sorry, Kealan, could you put up that? Thank you so much. Portland's consistently high lead levels far surpass region cities like Seattle, who also has naturally corroded water and similar, the same homes with lead solder. The Water Bureau's problem has been around for 30 years, even while engineers had the tools in their toolbox to tackle it. We thought we'd share the story of Newark, New Jersey, a 32nd version. In 2016, Newark schools made headlines for finding lead in school drinking water, as did Portland that very same spring. After a couple of years of foot dragging, Newark Water and Sewer was forced to admit high lead levels in Newark schools were a sign of more serious problems citywide. The schools were simply the canary in the coal mine. After repeated and unsuccessful attempts to resolve the issue without litigation, groups filed a citizen suit against the city and state. And in June 2018, that was in June 2018, to secure safe drinking water for Newark residents, Newark immediately handed out filters and bottled water. And then, in less than three years, they subsequently fixed treatment and they replaced, they're still replacing, but they replaced many lead-bearing pipes, all at no cost to residents. Vice President Harris visited Newark just last Friday to praise local officials and the state as a national city model. Newark demonstrated residents can drink water free from lead contamination. We also refuse to settle for anything less than drinking water, than safe drinking water for all. Commissioners, this is all hands on deck. Why haven't you held a press conference? Why should pregnant people, infants, preschoolers, and even the general public wait for city water test kits which take months to process? Instead, why aren't free filters available right now and until the Portland Water Bureau permanently reduces lead? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next individual, please. Kealan, item number 89.
Request of Abby Greenfield to address council regarding banning the sale of foie gras.
Good morning, Abby.
Hi, good morning. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yep, loud and clear, and we see you as well. Good morning.
Okay, great. Good morning. So my name is Abby Greenfield, and I am a student at Lewis and Clark Law School. When I first moved to Portland, I was really excited to be immersed in such a forward-thinking, environmentally conscious, and beautiful area, which is why I was surprised to learn that foie gras is still served in Portland. I strongly believe that continuing to allow foie gras in Portland goes against the very core of what this city stands for. The cruel practice involved in foie gras production is pretty difficult to comprehend. Geese and ducks are force-fed with a metal or plastic tube shoved down their throats. This happens three times a day, every day, until their livers become diseased, which often causes them to grow about 10 times their normal size. And these animals have a mortality rate 20 times higher than that of non-force-fed birds because of the serious health consequences that come from this practice. Many of the ducks and geese in the foie gras industry have weakened immune systems, which makes them very susceptible to avian influenza infections, more commonly known as bird flu. Sadly, I recognize that we are all too familiar with the detrimental impacts of disease outbreaks as we continue to struggle with COVID-19. I think that's made all the more obvious that unfortunately, I have to speak with you all today behind a screen rather than in person. And it's important to note that the bird flu can spread to humans and leads to disease outbreaks. So while we continue to try and manage COVID-19 and the variants that continue to wreak havoc on our lives, another disease outbreak is the last thing that we need. In 2021 alone, France registered 475 outbreaks of avian influenza at poultry farms, and the majority of those farms were foie gras operations. When these ducks and geese are not being barbarically force-fed, they spend their short lives in crowded cages, no access to fresh air or sunlight. And whether you consume animal products or not, I think we can all agree that this type of animal production is unnecessarily cruel. No food product should be worth inducing liver disease and force-feeding just so we can consume it. The geese and ducks are sadly not the only ones who suffer. Our environment suffers as well. Almost all foie gras that is produced in the U.S. comes from a massive factory farm in upstate New York. And the EPA's database has shown that this operation has violated numerous environmental protection laws. If Portland were to ban the sale of foie gras, we would not be alone. We'd be joining New York City, the state of California, as well as the UK, Germany, Italy, Norway, Poland, Turkey, Israel, and India. I urge the council to please support our efforts in banning the foie gras sale in Portland and continuing to commit to a more ethical Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Next individual, Kealan, item number nine.
Request of Peter Rose to address council regarding the housing crisis shortage being exasperated by requirements from bureaus.
Good morning, Peter.
Good morning. Can you hear me, council?
Yep, loud and clear.
Thank you. Today, I wanted to take the opportunity to share with you the vast barriers owners are currently facing to bring additional multifamily apartments to the market. I am currently employed by Capital, a locally owned and operated management company specializing in multifamily. Carla Perlstein, a client of ours, owns several historic apartment buildings in the greater Portland area. She specializes in restoration and is committed to preserving the last true affordable housing stock in the city. Rather than going the demolition and new construction route, Carla insists on the preservation of housing stock, which ultimately results in a more affordable product for renters. Having framed this for you, she owns a building named the Johnson Street Commons in northwest Portland that has an existing studio in the basement. The previous owner used it as storage, and when Carla purchased the building to restore it, she desired to bring the unit back on the market. Having said that, the original building plans could not be located, and the city did not have the unit registered. Even though the unit was clearly original to the construction of the building with the 1950s cabinets, the city demanded that we go through all of the necessary steps to bring it up to code. The subsequent requests from BDS, the Water Bureau, as well as PBOT have been so onerous that the overall cost to bring this single unit to marketplace consists of two-thirds of non-codependent requests of the building, which include intersection improvements required by PBOT, $19,000; additional water meter required by Portland Water Bureau, $33,000; a trash enclosure required by BDS, $21,000. In addition to these three large requirements that have a substantial impact on the economic feasibility of legalizing this unit, there are other small items, which include a bike enclosure, sprinklers, and soundproofing for a vintage building. Breaking down these costs, the city's requirements account for a remarkable 75% of the overall costs, which are $186,000 to bring this single unit to the marketplace. Please note that this number does not include the original structure, since it is an existing unit. As a housing provider, Capital and the owner of the building, Carla Perlstein, would greatly appreciate a thorough review of these demands and consideration for the lack of housing supply. We understand every city department has a budget with revenue goals. However, if these requirements are not reviewed together, a true solution to the housing crisis will never be attainable. A supply will and already has tapered off. Like the goals of HB 2001, the objective for housing creation should be to increase supply in support of the science of economics or supply and demand, not create additional barriers which will reduce affordability for residents. Given the current housing affordability crisis, I would implore council and their bureaus to look at these demands across the city in lockstep with a goal to stabilize affordability. Thank you, council, and I will yield the remaining of my time to the next item on the docket.
Thank you, Peter. Last but certainly not least...
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yep, Commissioner Hardisty, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
No worry. If I may, I have a question for Peter. So, Peter, I don't know if you're aware, there's been an internal group led by Commissioner Ryan for at least the last year, consisting of permitting groups. And a couple of things you said struck me. One, the bureaus that I have are not bureaus that, other than PBOT, that charge us permitting fees. Well, actually, it's not true. FIRE does too, for some things. But let me just say that there's a reason for some of those permits. So, for example, there was a fire last year that four people died because there was no sprinkler system in that building. We would be irresponsible to allow someone to have a residency and not have a sprinkler system if they are renovating the property. So I can say that that is absolutely necessary. And the other thing is, is that doing street improvements so that all the community benefits from the development also, in my mind, is a good thing. I don't know this individual situation, so I can't speak to it specifically, but I can say that you've made some generalizations that I absolutely disagree with. And if there's a problem, let's talk about how to unpack the problem that this individual is having, because I can tell you, people are trying their best to really remove barriers. And let me ask you one question. When you say affordable, what do you mean?
Affordable in terms of, in comparison to new construction. It's not new construction. This is an existing unit and a building that's been vacant for, that we've known for...
Okay, let me give you... Stop. Here's a direct question. How much money do I need to make in order to rent this building once it's renovated?
I'm sorry, I'm not too sure I understand that question.
Well, when people tell me a lot about they're building affordable housing, the median family income in this region is $96,900. So when somebody says they're building affordable housing, and it just happens to be at 80%, that means they have to make $70,000 to afford a studio or one bedroom. So when you say affordable, I just want to know affordable for who?
Right, and I guess where I was going with this, Commissioner Hardisty, and I appreciate your perspective on this. I did follow that fire, and I do want to acknowledge that that was a complete disaster. The sprinkler requirement responding to that is, as I stated, a very small portion of the requirements. The larger ones that I stated are kind of the more barriers that we're kind of dealing with. Typically, I would agree with your perspective for new construction. That being said, this is a single unit in an existing building. That's where the economic feasibility to bring this online, really where the rubber hits the road, is an issue. As far as the affordability that you speak of, you know, from our perspective, the supply and demand, you know, that's real in this market. And if we cannot bring small units in existing buildings online and have these huge hurdles, that's a problem. And I do want to seek to be a part of the solution, rather than just stating the problem. So if there is an existing committee, I would love to be a part of it.
Well, I appreciate, I'm not going to speak for Commissioner Ryan, but I do know that there's internal work happening, so, and I see he's just unmuted. But I appreciate you being here, Peter. I just want to say we're all frustrated because we see the houseless crisis on every corner of our community, right? So I just want people to be intentional when they talk to me about affordable housing. Just who are they talking about it's affordable for, right? Because a lot of workers in the city cannot afford to live in the city of Portland today. And so I just want to make sure when we say affordable, we are talking about affordable for professionals, affordable for the investment class, or affordable for the working class, right, in our community. So thank you very much. Appreciate you being here, and appreciate your offer of help.
Thank you.
We need your help. Thank you.
Peter, thanks so much for being here. Our office will be in touch with you and Carla so we can go deeper to understand. And what you brought up was very important, and all of this is very nuanced. So it's complicated, and I'm glad you're part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, council. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Kealan, next individual, item number 91, please.
Request of Brian Wellington to address council regarding child support laws. Brian hasn't joined us yet.
All right, very good. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
No.
Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Hi.
Ryan.
Hi.
Hardisty.
Hi.
Maps.
Hi.
Wheeler.
Hi. The consent agenda is adopted. To time certain item number 92 and 93 red together, please.
92, create the Arleth Heights Local Improvement District to construct street, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements. And 93, authorize a full payment deferral loans program to property owners in the Arleth Heights Local Improvement District until the participating property is sold and/or title transferred to another owner or entity.
These are first readings of non-emergency ordinances. Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. I am happy to bring these projects to you that have been a long time in the works. Excuse me. I want to start off by thanking the other bureaus that have been working with us from the very beginning to bring these projects to council today. I want to thank BES, POTS Project Managers. Also, of course, PBOT, PBOT staff being led by Elizabeth Tilström. These projects, I'm sorry, I just lost my document. Please give me just a sec. Actually, what I will do is turn it over to PBOT staff Elizabeth and have her take it away, and I will come back later with my comments. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, and good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Tilström, project manager with the Bureau of Transportation. My name's Elizabeth Tilström, project manager with the Bureau of Transportation, and I'm joined today by my counterpart in the Bureau of Environmental Services, project manager Sean Bistoff. And we are both excited and relieved to finally be at this point and be bringing these two ordinances to you for approval. The first being to create the local improvement district for the Arleth Heights Street and Stormwater Project. And then the second, very important accompanying ordinance, is to establish the deferral program for the LID. And this defers all payments for property owners within the LID district until such time as they sell their property or transfer the title. And it is the second ordinance and this program that was really the turning point for our work in the community and conversations with the community about forming this LID and the turning point for getting the community support. So very important, and we're really excited to bring both forward to you today. As you may recall, we were in front of you last year around this time with the resolution that authorized P-Bot to begin the LID formation proceedings. We have since completed that work and the LID assessment and valuations with the Revenue Bureau. And over the last year, in addition to that work related to the LID formation proceedings, we have completed the design after some additional refinements with the Water Bureau as well as site-specific. And I'm realizing I'm not sharing my screen here, so I'm just going to do that real quick and open my PowerPoint so you can all see. And so, over the last year, we completed the design.
Excuse me, Elizabeth. Do you think you're sharing your screen now? Because we're still not seeing anything.
Yes, I'm not seeing it. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so over the last year, in addition to working on the LID formation, we completed the design with, like I said, with refinements, with the Water Bureau, with BES, with parks, and then also some site-specific refinements with individual property owners. So the design has since been completed. We are now preparing those plans to be packaged and advertised for bid to go out to construction. So that's happening. And then, over the last year, we also went through a land use permitting process and hearing to receive approval for the two stormwater facilities, large basin stormwater facilities that will be located in the south part of our project area on Park's property in open space. So that was another work item that took some time over the last year. But nonetheless, we are finally here and very excited. So we thought, since it's been a while, we would briefly go through the scope and goals of this project, both the street improvements and the stormwater elements, get into the specifics of the LID, and then open it up to questions. We have some community members signed up to testify. We did not invite testimony this time. We had great testimony last time by residents in Arleth, longtime residents with families advocating for this project, that we'd let others sign up and testify this time.
Excuse me, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Would you mind if I stepped in? I found my notes. I want to make sure that I set this stage because this, again, is a project that took a very long time. And so if you don't mind, I will do my statement and then turn it back over to you, if that's okay with the mayor.
I would love it. Absolutely. Yeah, thanks.
And I will ask if you'll just take the slide down for a moment?
Oh, excuse me. Yep.
No worries. It's actually my fault. My printer was out of paper. I didn't know it.
I'm so sorry. For some reason, my Zoom window does not want to show back up.
That's okay. I will just start talking and we'll just go with the flow.
Okay. Oh, there you go. Okay. Thank you, Keela, if you helped with that.
Thank you. And so let me start by just saying thank you to the mayor and thank you to the council. It really is a pleasure to bring this local improvement district formation to council because it's really been a very long time coming. This Earl Heights Street Improvement Project is once again reaching an important milestone to date in its twelve-year history. The design has finally been completed by multiple iterations between P-Bot, BES, Portland Parks, consulting engineers, and property owners. And at this time, staff has completed work on the LID formation proceedings and are recommending that council form the LID and authorize the project for bidding. It has been a long journey for everyone involved in getting us to this point today. And I really want to thank everyone that has been involved in this project over the years, including community members, property owners, and city staff for their commitment, their advocacy, and patience in seeing this project to this point. We are excited to finally form this LID that has such significant community support and that we are able to commit to capping the cost to property owners and fully defer any payments until further sales or title transfer of the property. This is due through the additional P-Bot and BES funding allocated to this project. This project has had a significant impact on residents in Earl Heights and the surrounding community. Eighty-eight percent of the streets within Earl Heights, that's almost one point two miles combined, are unimproved, which creates serious livability issues. Also, due to the typographical of this area, these unimproved roads continue to impact water quality and habitat within the Johnson Creek watershed. And so, this project really represents the largest application of P-Bot's shared street standard in a city. And we hope that the collaboration with BES and the community provides important lessons learned that can be utilized for future projects aimed at reducing the remaining forty-plus miles of residential gravel streets in the city of Portland. And so now, I am very happy to turn it back over to Elizabeth so that she doesn't have to work so hard to explain why this is such an incredible project. Again, thank you all and appreciate the ability to set that context. All right, Elizabeth, I'm passing my fingers that your slideshow will pop back up.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. I appreciate it. And I don't think I could have cited all that information and really important facts. Thank you for sharing all of it.
You're welcome. Yes, I thought it was very important that we did the whole picture. Thank you. And thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so as we talk about Arleth Heights, just a refresher of really where this is and what the scope includes. So our project area includes all of those blue streets, the streets you see lined in blue here. Again, one point two miles within this area. Most of the streets within Arleth Heights here, with the exception of Southeast Forty-Six, which was improved years ago with the development along this street. So it sits between Forty-Fifth and Fifty-Second, south of Woodstock, south of Favel and Rex here, and just north of Johnson Creek and the Arleth Heights Park you see in the south part of this map. Here are some images of the existing conditions in Arleth, and this photo was taken years ago and is now, conditions definitely have not improved. And on many streets, conditions look just like this or worse. I was in the project area, driving through the neighborhood a week or two ago, and there really is no straight line you can follow anymore. It's definitely really good traffic calming, but it presents challenges for anyone trying to move through this neighborhood by any mode, on foot, by bike, driving a vehicle. Definitely presents challenges for mail delivery, freight delivery, emergency response. There's a property owner that I heard from in Arleth where, just driving through the neighborhood, you know, they have back problems. And just driving through the neighborhood presents just a lot of pain, just trying to get to and from their house. So definitely livability, accessibility issues that this community is dealing with. And many streets, you know, are impassable. This is, the photo on the right is a section of Tenino Court that it doesn't matter the season, you really can no longer travel on this section of roadway. You have to enter the neighborhood another way to try to get to your property if it's down in this area. Because the stormwater, the topography combined with the amount of stormwater coming from above our project area has just eroded these roads such a great deal to where, you know, with the years of lack of maintenance and being unimproved are no longer passable. So the neighborhood's been asking for this project for a very long time, and I've been working on this project since two thousand eight. And it even started, or no, excuse me, two thousand ten, but it started in two thousand eight. And these were the goals and objectives established with the community. So the intent for this project is we improve the roads, is to improve access for pedestrians, people biking, driving cars, emergency vehicles, improving access to schools, parks, and community centers, addressing safety and livability. And as well as, one of the most important pieces of this project is really stormwater conveyance and water quality. And Sean Bistoff from BES will talk about that in a moment. As we improve these roads, the goal was to maintain the low traffic volumes and speeds that we currently see throughout Arleth. There was definitely concern as we paved these roads that this would become an attractive cut through for the neighborhood. And I'll speak in a moment about how our design aims to address and mitigate that concern and also maintaining the character of the neighborhood. Those that chose to buy homes or live in this area, many did so because of the more rural aesthetic, even though you're very close in in the city. It has a different feel in this area, and the goal was to still maintain some of that character as we built this infrastructure in the neighborhood. All of this needed to be low-cost. There was concern about displacing longtime residents, you know, anyone on fixed or low income. And so it took a lot of work developing the LID and the deferral program to make sure that we address this concern and people can stay in the neighborhood once we're done building this project. And that's really what this last goal was about, is our commitment to the community to pursue other funding opportunities. And I'm happy to report that we did just that, and there is very significant public subsidy on this project to help reduce those LID costs. And so how we were able to really keep those costs low while maintaining the rural aesthetic was to apply P-Bot's shared street design standard. And so shared streets are on residential streets only. They need to carry less than five hundred vehicles per day. These streets, once they're improved, will now have a lower posted speed limit than other local residential streets. So instead of twenty miles per hour, they'll be posted at fifteen. At all entry points in the neighborhood, we will have shared street signs installed calling out that this is a different, unique street that especially drivers can expect other modes to be in the center of the street and legally allowed to use that space equally. And here is a rendering of what that shared street will look like. This is going to be the design for all of the north-south streets in Arleth Heights. So Forty-Eighth, Forty-Ninth, Fifty-First, and the Halum. It pretty much includes your narrow center strip paving. Adjacent to that will be actually gravel sections for on-street parking. And then between the on-street parking and private property, kind of through that transition zone, will be our stormwater management infrastructure. So those conveyance channels that will infiltrate stormwater and also carry it down to localized said sump systems or into pipe infrastructure that would then pipe the stormwater out to BES's existing infrastructure on Forty-Fifth and Fifty-Second. So this is the shared street design on two of the streets in the project area, and they're the main east-west, they're the entry points into the neighborhood and the east-west connectors. This is mauled into the north and southeast Tenino Drive and southeast Tenino Court to the south will still have that narrower asphalt section. But on one side of the street, there will be sidewalks. So as we improve these roads, in the event that this area started to see an increase in traffic, if it became an attractive cut through between Forty-Fifth and Fifty-Second, we wanted to make sure pedestrians were out of the roadway and safe to also help reduce these east-west roads from being that attractive cut through. These roads will be chicaned, so it's the curvilinear design you see in this rendering. And then, in addition to the curved road, these roads will have speed bumps as well as curb extensions at the entry points to kind of serve as pinch points so that it doesn't really look like a street you should be cutting through to go between the two main roads. And with that, I will turn it over now to Sean to talk specifically about the BES stormwater elements.
Okay, thank you, Liz, and thank you, council. I'm Sean Bistoff. I'm the capital project manager for the BES portion of this project, which is stormwater management and design and construction. I won't go into too much technical detail here, but I do want to explain a little bit about the unique stormwater design that we have in Arleth Heights LID and the direct benefits it will have for Johnson Creek. So the initial concept was to do some surface infiltration with green streets and vegetated planters based on our design and analysis, the soil types, the steep slopes that Liz showed you in the photos. That wasn't possible to do that shallow surface infiltration. So we moved to a hybrid approach, which is to use sumps, which are deeper groundwater injection devices. So the stormwater, whoops, it's back, okay, which will send stormwater into the deeper groundwater after flowing through some sedimentation manholes that will provide primary treatment. There are also two large vegetated stormwater facilities at the southern edge of the Arleth Heights LID project that are situated in places where infiltration does actually work. And those facilities are located on Park's property, and I'd like to thank Portland Parks and Recreation for their partnership and cooperation in citing those facilities is really beneficial, and it was great to work with Parks on that effort. BES will be maintaining the system, and we're encouraging property owners to, you know, help care for the system as well by removing debris and trash and weeds from the conveyance facilities in front of their properties. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, there's a very direct benefit to Johnson Creek by treating the stormwater in the Arleth Heights neighborhood. On the right, you can see an outfall to Johnson Creek. Almost all the stormwater that's generated in the Arleth Heights neighborhood flows down those streets through those heavily rutted areas that are shown on the left. Carries suspended sediments, which also entrains metals, all the urban contaminants we're used to seeing, oils and greases, and it goes out to the creek directly through that outfall. By implementing the stormwater system in Arleth Heights, a vast majority of that urban runoff from that outfall will be managed for water quality. It's important to note that outfall is right in the middle of a BES effort that's in very early design phases for restoration of Johnson Creek. Next slide, please. That's the Johnson Creek Oxbow Project. It is a water quality and habitat restoration project intended to benefit habitat for native species. And as mentioned, you know, Arleth Heights will have a very direct benefit to this project. It'll help us design a much better, more impactful project as we move along in the design process. And so if you take the Oxbow Project in combination with the Arleth Heights Project and then put it in context with the Arleth Heights Park Project that Parks is managing, we really have three really important projects. We really have three really important projects that are all very directly adjacent to each other in this, in this neighborhood that will have very direct benefits to the Johnson Creek watershed. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Liz.
And we would definitely be remiss if we did not acknowledge the Arrol Heights Project that you see here in this image that will be under construction at the same time. And we are joined today by Ross Swanson, the Project Manager for the Arrol Heights Park Project with the Parks Bureau. Should there be any questions? But just wanted to highlight this very important project in that we have been in close coordination with the Parks Bureau on this project throughout the design phase. We are actually building the required frontage improvements that are being triggered by this park development on forty fifth on southeast Harney and fifty second, as well as Tenino Court for the Parks Bureau. So those improvements are now part of our project. They're being funded by the design and construction of those improvements are being funded by the Parks Bureau. And we will continue that coordination through construction since we will both be working out there at the same time. So we have coordination language in both of our contract specifications for the contractors to coordinate their schedules and sequencing of work. We, our project areas overlap, so very excited about this project. It's going to be very active in this neighborhood over the next year and a half, two years. And so we've already been in discussion with Parks about combining our outreach and communication efforts so that we are not inundating the the community too much. I'd like separately with information that that we're coordinated with that so that folks have one, one source of getting information and know who to contact with any questions or concerns during construction. So that's, that kind of wraps up the the scope of the Capitol work in Arrol Heights. And so wanted to turn now to the specifics of the of this LID. So it includes one hundred and fourteen properties in our project area. All of the the properties you see highlighted in blue on this map. The LID is capped at two dollars and fifty-five cents per square foot. So for an average five thousand square foot lot in Arrol Heights, that assessment is twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is a dramatic reduction from the original estimated assessment back in two thousand eight during the first, you know, LID effort and early conversations with the community where at that time, PBOAT only had its full, you know, build out standard for the entire ride for you. So full sidewalks, full street, which is about eighty thousand dollars for a five thousand square foot lot. So a dramatic reduction in in that cost to property owners. And then we do have some larger lots in Arrol. So that brings up the average assessment to a little over fourteen thousand dollars. As I discussed with this second ordinance and establishing the deferral program, all LID assessments can be deferred until the property is sold. So at the end of construction, when we, at the end of our closeout, we will offer the deferral to property owners. And if they elect to defer the payment, we will file liens with the county for those individual properties. PBOAT will fund the the LID costs upfront with local, with local funding, tax revenue. And then as payments come in over the years, those would be directed to pay to PBOAT and just replenish that fund. And just a reminder about our petition process that we did before we bought the resolution to counsel last year. So this is the results of the petition process. We typically, we require over fifty percent before bringing it to counsel. The petition process resulted in fifty, fifty-six, almost fifty-seven percent support independent of waiver status. And all of those properties you see highlighted in yellow actually have waivers on them. And this came from when those homes were built and developed in lieu of having the developer build a small, little short section of the required frontage improvements. We issued waivers. And so those are the properties you see in yellow. But fortunately, and and those waivers are kind of an automatic yes if and when the city were to come through with an LID to improve the streets. But we were really proud that through through our work with the community that we had over fifty percent support independent of waiver status. And then that that second number you see is when you, when you combine the waivers, we ended up with almost sixty-eight percent support for forming this LID. And I want to note that that doesn't mean that the remaining, you know, percentage of of property owners in Arrol don't, don't support that LID. Many just didn't respond and submit petitions of support. I want to note that we did receive through the LID formation proceedings, one waiver of remonstrance. This was a non-waivered property that had the right to submit a waiver. That waiver and the and PBOAT's response to the points in that letter have been submitted as an amended Exhibit E to the ordinance package for Agenda Item ninety-two. And with the the petition support and based on a review of that waiver of remonstrance, we are recommending that council still form that LID. And then just a recap of our funding breakdown. So the proposed LID would fund approximately eighteen percent of the the total project. Again, it is fixed at one point six million. And then this, this graphic lists out the the remaining funds that have been allocated for the project. So combined, PBOAT has allocated four million to the construction of the street improvements. BES is paying for the entirety of the stormwater improvements. And that is estimated at almost two point eight million. And then the Parks Bureau will be funding all of the sidewalk and frontage improvements adjacent, adjacent to the park. And combined, this puts us at a nine point three million dollar capital project. We've, we've talked about how long this has been going on. This is just kind of summary of of the history of this project. And at this point, as I mentioned, our our plans are completed and we are ready to bid this project and begin construction. So this would be our schedule moving forward. We're here today proposing the LID formation. This is the first reading, so so the second vote and approval would then be next week. Pending that, our goal would be to then advertise the project in March and then begin the utility, the advanced utility relocations this spring. Those utility relocations include PGE moving a number of poles in our project area that are in conflict with the proposed design. And then the Water Bureau has some relocations of their utilities in advance of our construction. And then we would go through our procurement process and likely start construction end of May, early June of this year. And construction would continue into the fall of twenty twenty-three. So most of the work that would occur this summer would be the major grading work, installation of the the stormwater infrastructure. There's, there's a ton of pipe and a number of set and some systems that will be installed on on all of the the streets in our project area. And then following that would be paving. So that's why we included two, two construction seasons that would would include a dry warmer weather for that work. So based on that, the anticipated final assessment would be spring of of twenty twenty-four, where we would be engaging property owners and offering deferrals for the LID. So that concludes our presentation. We also wanted to thank City Council for all of your support over the years and establishing that the Out of the Mud Program that initially funded our work on this as well as continued authorization of funding to help reduce those LID costs. Definitely past and present leadership and staff from BES, PBOAT and Parks and Recreation. This is, this is a multi-bureau effort and would not be possible without all of the the participation of staff and management from these bureaus. The Brent Darlington Neighborhood Association for their support and advocacy of this project over the years. And then last but not least, the Arrol Heights community, all the residents and property owners in this community that have helped advocate for the project, that have shown us grace and patience as we have worked, reworked, you know, just worked on that design and made refinements over the years. It's now pencils up. We think it's as good as it it can get and and we're ready to to begin construction. So with that, I will turn it back to you for for any questions. And and I, and I believe we have public testimony as well.
Very good. Any questions before we move to public testimony? Seeing none, Kealan, how many people do we have signed up?
We have one person on the call right now.
Very good, three minutes, name for the record, please.
Teresa Kubo.
Welcome, Teresa. Teresa is muted still.
Good morning. A little hitch in my get along there for some reason.
No worries.
So good morning, members of the council, and thank you for the time. My name is Teresa Kubo and I'm a resident in the Arrol Heights neighborhood. I'm really excited about this project and I wanted to testify this morning on behalf of the Local Improvement District proposal and the the proposed road project. I wanted to provide you some additional on-the-ground perspective on this project as you make your final decision. As you've seen, this decision will affect residents personally. It will also affect us on a neighborhood and a watershed level. We have personally been affected by the poor quality of the roads in our neighborhood. Just as an anecdote, my parents, who live in southern Oregon, came for a visit. When they were departing our house, they used Google Directions, which took them down to Nine Zero Drive to Forty-Fifth Avenue. This is definitely the shortest way by map, but as was mentioned, this road is no, it's, it's so poor. It is impassable except by high clearance vehicles. My parents bottomed out their car. It resulted in over a thousand dollars in damage to their car and it was a really inconvenient trip home. So yes, the roads are bad. And I'm also concerned that, you know, in the event of an emergency, emergency response time, I think, has been and continues to be affected by the quality of the roads in our neighborhood. We have an aging parent living with us and we have many elderly neighbors in our, in our neighborhood as as well as folks with health conditions and mobility issues. And, you know, in a, in a medical or a fire emergency, as you know, seconds matter. And navigating the Arrol Heights neighborhood safely can take precious time. I also wanted to echo Commissioner Hardisty and Sean and Elizabeth and note that, you know, the city of Portland and Metro and other agencies and organizations have spent millions of dollars on restoration actions in Johnson Creek and in its surrounding riparian and wetland areas. I spent twenty years working for the federal government on environmental protection and restoration issues. And I believe in the value and importance of that work. And it pains me to see those environmental gains compromised every time it rains. You know, whenever it rains, our road develops new rails and gullies. And we often riley say that we have riverfront property whenever it rains. So the the property, you know, our, our, our road river is, it's carrying tons of sediment directly into Johnson Creek. And as was noted, that sediment is compromising water quality, it's burying spawning gravels. And I, you know, I've also often felt that by not addressing this upstream work first, we've kind of been putting that restoration cart before the horse. So in sum, I strongly support the formation of the Local Improvement District and the proposed road project. I want to thank PBOAT and the Bureau of Environmental Services and Parks for their hard work on this, especially Elizabeth, she's been great. And I just encourage the council to vote in favor of the LID formation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to substitute Exhibit E.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And I believe we have someone else for public testimony.
Yeah, very good. Could you or Elizabeth just give a couple of sentences, just so people know what it is we're doing with the motion?
Elizabeth, do you have it?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, could you just give us a few sentences, Elizabeth, on the substitute?
Yes, absolutely. So we had a placeholder Exhibit E for any written remonstrances we received. So we amended that exhibit to include the, a copy of the remonstrance as well as PBOAT's summary of that remonstrance and and the findings.
Okay, and to be clear, that is an Exhibit Two item to ordinance item number ninety-two, is that correct?
Correct, thank you, yes.
Okay, very good. So I don't forget, before I move this, I'd like to call the role on the addition of the exhibit on the amendment proposed by Commissioner Hardisty and seconded by myself. Please call the role.
Romeo.
Hi.
Ryan.
Hi.
Hardisty.
Hi.
Maps.
Hi.
Neeler.
All right, the amendment for item number ninety-two is adopted. Colleagues, further questions before we move this along?
I'm sorry, Mayor, we actually do have one other person.
Oh, sure, okay, go ahead and call that individual.
Thank you, Kathleen Gillezette.
Hi, Kathleen.
Are you able to hear me? I know I'm not Kathleen, but, okay, I'm Peter Guiozé, Kathleen's husband. She had a sudden field meeting this morning and couldn't call in. But I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity. And I guess I'll just echo the, my previous neighbor's comments. We're strongly in favor of the project. We're both ecologists, we've watched the, those problems over the years. We also suffer from the, the quality of life impacts in the neighborhood. And it's been a long and somewhat frustrating process, but we're glad to be at this stage and are strongly in favor of of the work. So I think I'll just leave it at that and thank you very much.
Great, we appreciate that, thank you. Colleagues, any further discussion? Seeing none, item number, Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Krishna Hardisty. I do have a couple of questions, just because I want to make sure I understand when I vote next week. Elizabeth, I heard you use the word relieved and I could tell by the people testifying, that's an accurate word. So I want to, first of all, acknowledge that there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. And I'm coming in just to ask a couple of questions to understand a little bit more. One is, maybe it's a pet peeve of my own, when I see these type of maps and I see cars that looks like they're going both ways, but with all the additions, is there room for two-way traffic and on some of these streets? And if not, I know in my neighborhood, we've just decided that they're not two-way streets any longer. And we, we figured that out, the locals have. But when the deliveries come in, which we all know have increased quite a bit because people are at home and they're ordering many goods that come in large trucks, it's a thing. So I just wanted to hear your voice a bit about that.
Yeah, thank you, great question. Yes, all of the streets with an arrow will still be two-way streets. The minimum width for the roadways in Arrow, excuse me, in Arrow will be eighteen feet. So definitely sufficient width for two vehicles to pass. That being said, some people, some drivers can be uncomfortable. And so there definitely is that space adjacent to the roadway where we have on-street parking on both sides. For if, if vehicles did, if drivers didn't feel like there was enough room, there's definitely that room to scoot over in, in, into the on-street parking area to to pass, yeah. Or, yeah, I think there'll be plenty of opportunities if there, especially if there are two large vehicles passing.
Okay, good. To hear that there's that buffer at the end where people can park is helpful. Just a quick statement and then one more question. Quick statement is, I saw one photo that looked like a car parked on a sidewalk. And I always said to my mobility challenge to friends that, and and also my friends who have new children, that I'd always make a comment if we saw someone blocking sidewalks, so just thought I'd say that. And maybe I was looking at the slide wrong, but that's what it looked like. The question I have is around the waivers. I heard you mention, which makes sense, it sounded like residents have already done improvements are part of the waiver. Is that, was that correct?
Like the, the, yeah, the waivers are tied to the, or let me say, the the waivers stem from the development of the properties. So when some, some of the homes were built in Arrol, we, in lieu of requiring any frontage improvements, we we issued waivers.
Okay, and so that was easy to follow. But I didn't hear, though I assume, but I don't want to assume, is those on fixed incomes? How are we, how are we providing? is those on fixed incomes. How are we, how are we providing waivers? And what are the thresholds for people that we obviously want to age of place or allow them to keep their homes? And that would suffer from these payments. What's that, what's that look like?
Yeah, so for, to go back from, so to clarify, the waivers were issued when those homes were developed. The city probably no longer issues waivers. Instead, we have the LTIC program where in lieu of developing the frontage, developers pay into a fee. We now use that money for projects similar to this. But the, to address the concern about any property owners on fixed or low income, the LID will be deferred until a later date when the property is sold or the title is transferred. So, that addresses the risk of people not being able to afford the payment or any displacement.
And did you tell us in the presentation, I felt, to hear you, what those thresholds are?
Everyone qualifies. Yeah, there isn't, there aren't any conditions. You don't have to meet any. There aren't any income requirements. We are offering it to all property owners in Arleth.
If they just don't want to pay it?
Correct, yeah. And it will be a lien on the property. Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah.
Good. Commissioner Maps?
Today, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Commissioner Hardesty for bringing this important item forward. I also want to acknowledge Sean and Elizabeth for that great presentation. I want to recognize Ross for being on deck. And for my colleagues who are relatively new to this project, I think it's worth pausing to underscore how remarkable this particular collaboration is. You know, we have PBOT, Environmental Services, and Parks all coming together to make changes that'll make life better for Portlanders. We improve our infrastructure, and we protect the environment. This is what environmental services sometimes call a triple win. Just really great work, and I think a model that I hope that we can replicate throughout the city. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. With that, item number 92 is a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. It's amended. Item number 93 is also a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading as well. And with that, we will go to item number 94, please, or report.
Accept the Year Six Bond Oversight Committee report on the $68 million Parks 2014 General Obligation Bond.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. The Parks Replacement Bond passed in 2014 for $68 million as focused on the repair and replacement of our parks' systems' most urgent needs. As required by the ballot measure, the Bond Oversight Committee was established in 2015. Members of the Oversight Committee were appointed by each city council member to represent the Portland community. The purpose of the committee is to review the work of the Parks Bureau in carrying out the promises and projects of the bond measure. And the committee's report is created in response to the Sixth Annual Report on the Parks 2014 General Obligation Bond and based on independent research and analysis. This report includes program evaluation and recommendations for moving forward as the bond program completes its work. The committee currently includes Karen Loper Tracy, David Staxak, Carl Chang, and Brianna Weston-Schau. I am very grateful for the time, depth of experience, and wise counsel of the committee that they've shared in guiding implementation of the Parks Replacement Bond over the last six years to ensure adherence to the bond language, fiscal accountability, and transparency. So, now I'd like to introduce David Staxak, Bond Oversight Committee member, who will present this report to council.
Hey, good morning. Can you guys hear me okay? See me okay? Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, hello and good morning. My name is David Stazak. I'm a resident of southeast Portland, and I'm also the Chair of the Community-led Parks Replacement Bond Oversight Committee. I'm here today to present to you our annual report for the 2020-2021 fiscal year and to provide a brief summary of the report. As Commissioner Rubio stated, this is the sixth year that the Bond Oversight Committee has the privilege of submitting its report to the mayor and city council. The committee would like to acknowledge the challenges faced by our city and its resources over the last two years, and would like to share our heartfelt appreciation for all that the PP and our staff and the bond program have done to keep our city and its amazing parks here for us in this great time of need. As an oversight committee, we're charged with three specific categories or objectives as it relates to the original bond. Objective number one is adherence to bond language. Objective number two is fiscal accountability, and objective number three is transparency. For objective number one, adherence to bond language, the voters approved the bonds to fix playgrounds, improve park facilities, improve park safety, and improve park accessibility. Specifically, the funds are for repairs and other capital costs, not for operational expenses. As we complete the sixth year of this bond measure, 49 of the 52 identified bond projects are now completed. And the three remaining projects, Gabriel Park, Mount Tabor Yard, and Delta Park Urban Forestry Yard, will be completed or begin construction in the year 2021-2022. This criterion of adherence to bond language has been and continues to be met. The Bond Oversight Committee receives regular updates for review and is confident that the costs are appropriately spent. Three bond issuances were made, and an audit of the bond program performance was completed in 2019, confirming this objective continues to be met. For objective two, maintaining fiscal accountability is a core driver of the Parks Replacement Bond. The dollars are clearly and separately tracked to ensure integrity and accuracy of financial statements. PP&amp;R remains fiscally accountable to bond dollars with a separate tracking system accessible to all staff, and administrative overhead is lower than 10% of the total budget goal. Budgets are on target in all categories except pools and maintenance yards currently. Highlights of some of the fiscal achievements have been that 41% of the value of the bond project construction contracts have been awarded to disadvantaged business enterprises, minority-owned, women-owned, emerging small businesses, and service-disabled veteran business enterprises. 31% of the value of all professional services awarded to bond projects were awarded to these COVID firms as well, far surpassing the original 20% goal. When we move on to objective three, transparency, the PP&amp;R bond team has demonstrated transparency and accountability in several significant ways. Firstly, by issuing annual reports, which are all available online. And this year, the executive summary will be in both English and Spanish. Secondly, the full performance audit completed in 2019 is also available online, and its findings demonstrate the bond program has been successful in delivering on promises made to the community in Measure 26159 and in Council Resolution 37085. And lastly, more, as more projects are completed and the final projects begin construction, the bond community engagement staff have focused on providing regular website updates, construction signage, and social media posts about ongoing projects. The Bond Oversight Committee would like to congratulate the PP&amp;R bond team on its success over the last six years, and the finish line is definitely in sight. We can all applaud that. Like last year's report, we would also recommend a final performance audit be conducted after all the bond projects reach final completion, and its findings to be submitted to the Bond Oversight Committee and City Council. We'd also like to suggest a final public survey and staff survey be taken to gauge the overall success and awareness of the lasting effects of the 2014 Parks Replacement Bond. It is my pleasure and privilege to serve on the Parks Replacement Bond Oversight Committee and to present our annual report to you, Mr. Mayor, and distinguished council members. If you have any questions or comments about the report or this presentation, I'd be happy to take them now.
Colleagues, any questions at this point? Seeing none. This is a report. Kealan, do we have any testimony on this item?
No one signed up for this item.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion. Salute. Commissioner Hardesty, and Commissioner Rubio, second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Rubio.
I want to thank David for the presentation and being here today, and also thanks to Parks and Recreation and the Oversight Committee for bringing the report forward. I also just want to acknowledge the hard and thorough work of the Oversight Committee that they've undertaken and working hand-in-hand with our park staff. COVID-19 brought drastic changes to the bond program work, but despite this, our dedicated park staff continue to work full-time and are working closely with the Oversight Committee to ensure clear communications and meeting the project goals. So, I'm happy to vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, first of all, thank you, and congratulations, Commissioner Rubio, with the Bond Oversight Committee. David, that was a very clear and concise report. Sometimes we don't ask questions. It's because you just hit it out of the park. So, thank you, and also for the incredible leadership of Director Long, very capable governance. And it's noted that your achievements of awarding contracts to women and by contractors well above the 20% goals is rather refreshing, and that is operationalizing equity. So, congratulations. I'm really looking forward to the evolution of all the other projects, and I'm excited to see those completions. And it's always fun when you come to the council and give these updates. I accept this report.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio and David. Excellent presentation. It is good to see when we do what we tell the public we're going to do. Parks continues to provide an opportunity for the public to have confidence in the things that we tell them. So, when the report actually is within budget and on time and no drama attached to it, and you exceed equity goals, in my mind, it is, it's worked very well done. And I will say, I'm still looking forward to hearing about the long-term funding stream that Parks is developing, because we cannot continue to do what we've always done and expect the outcomes to be different. So, I am very happy to vote aye on this report today and look forward to an update on the progress of long-term funding to address the huge backlog of maintenance that Parks has. Thank you.
Maps.
I join my colleagues in thanking David for the presentation and congratulating Commissioner Rubio and Parks for bringing in these projects on time and on budget. For these reasons, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
This is a great report. We're on track. Thank you, everybody, for the report. I vote aye. The report is accepted. Next item, please, is item number 95.
Authorized Bureau of Environmental Services Director to offer market rate and safety net loans to property owners for sanitary sewer dump installation when required by city code and for repairs on private property to continue sanitary sewer service.
This is a non-emergency ordinance. Commissioner Maps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this ordinance comes to us from the Bureau of Environmental Services. This ordinance expands an environmental services financial assistance program which supports the installation of sanitary services for permanently occupied vehicles on properties. This work is an extension of the Shelter-to-Housing Continuum Project that council approved last year. This project will decrease financial barriers for people who want to provide additional housing on their properties. It also protects the public's health from disease, bacteria, and pathogens by providing proper sanitary sewer services for this housing. Here, with a brief presentation, is Ivy Dunlap, Landscape Architect with Environmental Services. Welcome, Ivy.
Thank you for the introduction, our commissioner. I appreciate that. And let's see, the council has my presentation to project for me. Thank you. So, next slide, please. As Commissioner Maps noted, the Shelter-to-Housing Continuum Project changed city code to allow for permanently occupied recreational vehicle or a tiny house on wheels on private property to expand housing options. In these cases, city code requires installation of a sanitary sewer dump, also known as a dump station, to provide safe and sanitary housing. This legislation I presented today will make meeting the code requirements for this housing option more affordable for property owners by providing loans. Next slide. BES currently provides loans to support homeowners' ability to obtain and maintain sanitary sewer service. This program is administered by EMB for 28, BES's financial assistance rule. These loans are available for two code-required situations. First, properties required to decommission a septic system and make a new connection to the city system. And second, properties required to correct shared or party sewers, and also sometimes referred to as non-conforming sewer. There are two types of loans available. There are market rate and safety net loans. Market rate loans are conventional loan option, and safety net loans offer a low-interest deferred payment option for income-qualified property owners. The payment deferral can happen until the sale of the property or the transfer of the. Both loan options are available to pay for SDC and conversion charges that are charged when the connection is made for either of the situations described above, and to pay for resulting sanitary plumbing work on private property that might be necessary to make that, to make that connection. These loan options and what they can pay for will continue to be available. None of this will be going away. Next slide. In addition to the expenses I mentioned, this legislation will expand the allowable expenses to include the market rate and the safety net loan as an option to install a sanitary sewer dump to accommodate a permanently occupied RV or tiny house on wheels on residential property. Sort of a mouthful. And then we are also expanding the safety net loan program to finance emergency repairs to continue sanitary service, potentially preventing people from losing their current housing or living in unsanitary conditions. Next slide. These changes will be incorporated into the existing administrative rule in B428. Public comment on the rule opened on February 7th, and the changes that are described today with this ordinance are, will be incorporated into that, and they are anticipated to go into effect at the beginning of April. Next slide. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Great report. Thank you, colleagues. Any questions? Commissioner Hardesty has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ivy. That was a fabulous presentation, but it just raised all kinds of questions for me. So, is it true that this program has existed for a year, and now we're expanding it?
No, it's existed, I believe, since the 90s. The sanitary sewer dump portion, that requirement went into effect, I believe, in August of 2021. The loan program, the larger program that I described, has been in effect since the 90s during the mid-county annexation when sanitary sewer connections were required.
Ah, yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
The good old days, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Sure.
Can you tell me, like, how many homeowners are able to take advantage of this annually?
So, I do have some. If you'll hold on one second, I do have some statistics on that.
I see that it's about $300,000 a year, but I'm wondering how many households have been helped?
Sure. So, in, let's see, I guess I'll work backwards. In fiscal year 2021, BES financed 23 loans. In fiscal year 1920, BES financed 19 loans. And in fiscal year 1819, BES financed 14 loans. So, you can see the number is going up. We're proposing to keep the budget of $300,000 a year the same for now. And of course, we will, you know, revisit that as time goes on to see if we need to expand that allocation.
And my last question, when's the last time you evaluated the income-eligible opportunities by the ones that were based on income? What, where is that? What is the median family income that you're using to judge that on?
Sure. So we just evaluated that when we are making the changes to the rule. So I didn't want to get too into the weeds on the rule because it gets all swirled around, but I can't answer your question. So in updating the rule, we changed the safety net income qualifications from 80% median family income requirement to 100% median family income requirement. So more people will qualify for the safety net program. We also increased the savings cap.
I saw that.
Fifty thousand, yeah, $50,000 to $100,000. So that reduces the penalty for saving money and would make the loan, the safety net program, available to more property owners.
Yeah, and so I'm curious how you would prioritize that in a community where the median family income for a family of four is $96,900? How do you prioritize, when you say low income or income-restricted option? I am terrified that we haven't moved beyond a very artificial number like median family income to address the severe need in our community. And that's not just BES, that's just like as society, we, you know, we keep using it as a tool, and the tool is just further and further away from people's reality. So I'm just really curious as to who we're helping stay in their homes and who we're helping to actually be able to have auxiliary units that are hooked up at reduced rates. Because, you know, from where I sit, I'm just terrified that we continue to say that we're doing one thing, but the data just does not, does not show that that's true, right? The people that need the most help aren't even on the radar when we, when we talk about these kind of programs, so.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Well, I will say, not really specific to your, to your comment, to your question, that we do plan to do more outreach about the program. We do coordinate with the Housing Bureau with their home repair loan options. We will coordinate with the nuisance complaint with BDS, that program. So we hope that we can get the word out more about this loan option because potentially the bigger hurdle could be people just not knowing that this is an option available, so.
Ivy, you're absolutely right, because I think about how many homes firefighters go into on a regular basis. And if other city boroughs knew what other city boroughs were actually up to, how helpful we could be to each other. So it does beg the question. And I really like your creative thinking, Ivy. I think, I think there's a lot of knowledge in your head that we should be accessing. So thank you for being here today. I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Commissioner Maps and Ivy. It's good to see you and thank you for that great presentation. I just want to make sure that I'm tracking this right. First of all, it's exciting to see the work that we focused on last spring, Shelter to Housing Continuum, come to us in an operational form. So that's exciting. But I want to make sure it's actually delivering on what we discussed in those many meetings that we had on it. And these, I hope, are softball questions. So how can we track that this is actually an affordable housing strategy? And not a guest cottage or not a vacation rental? I just wanted to make sure we have those kind of rules in place. Just dazzle me with that knowledge, please.
Yeah, I, I can, or BES will only be able to tell you how many people take advantage of the loan option for the for making the sanitary sewer connection. We don't have any other, BES does not have any other tracking option available to us for who else might be making the connection and not asking for a loan. It's a plumbing loan that is required to install it. So BES does not oversee the plumbing loans that it's BDS. And I did try to look into, in my research for this program, how many plumbing loans have been initiated to make this, to put in a sanitary sewer dump. And it's not something in the plumbing permit. I think I used, I think I used the wrong word there. I think I meant permit when I was saying loan. Anyway, there is no tracking of plumbing permits for a sanitary sewer dump installation. So that would have to, my understanding, and because I've had this question from other folks, you're not the first one. My understanding is that that would be a BDS-driven data, data collection effort.
Since we're all one team, I will make sure that I talk to the housing commissioner and make sure that that coordination is there. And I'll also talk to the commissioner who oversees BDS to see if this coordination's all in place. So I am now officially talking to myself. Thank you so much for this.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question because it came up. You were not the
Oh, no, we're the city that, you know, there's a lot of this that goes on.
Yeah.
We have to figure out how it's coordinated. So we actually deliver on what we discussed in those countless meetings we ran last spring. Yeah, thank you.
So Dan just had the quote of the day. That was my, my favorite by far. So thank you for that. All right, any further discussion on on this item? Is there any further testimony on this item, Kealan?
No, Mayor.
All right, very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you, everybody. With that, we'll flip the page here. Looks like we're to the regular agenda, item 108, the report.
Appoint members to the, I'm sorry, appoint members to the Private for Hire Transportation Advisory Committee for three-year terms.
Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I did not know I was presenting this item, but I am going to turn it over to Mark Williams, who is standing ready to actually let us know how we got to this place.
Perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning. What you have before you are appointments to the Private for Hire Advisory Committee. There are about 19 members total, but these are members that are replacing existing members that have expired terms. We expect to bring additional members to council here in the coming future as we continue to go through the recruitment process. So that being said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think it's a really excellent list of candidates. I was very happy to see that we've involved a gentleman from the Green Cat Industry on the board. I have no additional questions. Mayor, colleagues, any questions?
I have no questions at this particular point. I think these are good appointments, and I appreciate their willingness to serve. And so with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the report.
So, vote.
And I'll second it myself. Any further discussion on the appointments or the reports? Saying none, please call the roll.
Rubio.
I just want to thank the new appointees for their willingness to serve. I vote I.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you so much for the countless hours you are going to put in to being of service to the city of roses. I vote I.
Hardisty.
I am just so happy to see the creativity that's come out of the Transit for Hire community. I didn't know what would happen to the taxi industry, but the ability to come together and create a network, I think, is some of the best work that's happened in the for-hire transit industry in some time. And so thank you, Mark, for your work to get us some excellent candidates to replace folks who have transitioned off, and I look forward to the next group. We've got some work to do to make sure for hire transit is equitable and fair all across the city of Portland. So I'm very happy today to vote I, and I look forward to our continued work together.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Max.
I.
Wheeler.
I. The report is accepted. Thank you very much. Next item on the regular agenda, Kealan, can you please read items 109 and 110 together? 109 is resolution, 110 is report.
109, amend the Community Budget Advisory Board to allow participation of those who live, work, worship, play, or go to school in Portland. And 110, appoint James Parker to the Community Budget Advisory Board for a term to expire December 31st, 2024.
Very good. And I'm going to have some comments on this. But before I do that, I'm going to turn this over to Director Jessica Kennard from the City Budget Office to present the resolution. And then when she's done with that, I have some comments on the point. Welcome, Director Kennard.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to you and to members of council. Again, for the record, my name is Jessica Kennard. I'm the city's budget director. So I have some comments on the first item, which is a resolution. The Citywide Community Budget Advisory Board was originally authorized by the council in 2005 as the Citizen Budget Advisory Board. The board was then renamed by the council to the Community Budget Advisory Board in 2007. And this board is unique in that its members get a seat at the table at every council budget work session and are charged with providing direct input and advice to every member of the council. The authorizing legislation currently requires that participants of the board reside within the city of Portland. The resolution before you amends that requirement to allow the participation of those who reside, work, worship, play, or go to school within the city's jurisdictional boundaries. This is a small but meaningful amendment to reduce barriers to civic participation and to allow for the empowerment of voices from communities that have deep and meaningful connections to Portland, but who may not reside within the city limits due to displacement or other factors. Council will still be required to approve the appointment of all board members, but this amendment allows for more individuals with meaningful connections to Portland to be considered for appointment. This language is not unique to this board. It was modeled after language used for the Portland Utility Board, and it is supported by the Office of Community and Civic Life. And I'm available to take any questions on this item.
Very good. And before, before we get into questions, I'd like to introduce item 110. The Portland Community Budget Advisory Board was first created, as Director Kennard said, back in 2005 to provide the council with community input and advice in the budget decision-making process. And while boroughs seek community input on their budgets and investment decisions, the city Portland Community Budget Advisory Board offers their expertise and advice on citywide decisions as the council weighs the needs for the many priorities and services that the city provides. Being a community budget advisory board member requires a significant time commitment as board members participate in all of the council's budget work sessions. And as you all know, there are many of them. These advisors play a critical role in the city's multifaceted budget engagement processes. They often ask really good questions that need to be asked, and we're fortunate to benefit from the time and the expertise of all of our budget advisors. I am very happy to be adding James Parker to our group of esteemed advisors who'll be helping us with our budget decisions in the months to come. James is the executive director of the Oregon Native American Chamber, which is a nonprofit dedicated to providing economic and educational opportunities for Native Americans in Oregon and southwest Washington through the pillars of service in education and growth, relationship building, and economic justice and transformation. And I believe James is with us here today to say a few words about his background and his interest in serving on the Community Budget Advisory Board. Welcome, James.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and esteemed commissioners. My name is James Allen Parker. I'm an enrolled citizen of the Chippewa Cree tribal nation. And I come before you today with lived-in professional experience. I am a husband, father of three, and I live in a multi-generational household as we take care of our elder family members. Professionally, as you, as you mentioned, I'm the executive director of the Oregon Native American Chamber, as well as co-chair of the Community Chamber Coalition and co-convenor of the Oregon Small Business United Coalition of Oregon. Additionally, I also serve as the deputy director for the affiliated tribes of Northwest Indians, which is a regional policy and advocacy organization representing nearly 50 tribes in the Pacific Northwest. I have the honor and responsibility of serving on a number of city, city of Portland work groups and task force, including the Economic Recovery Committee and the mayor's action table. I also serve on the Governor's Racial Justice Council's Economic Opportunity Committee. It is with deep career and personal experience that I commit to serving on the city of Portland's Community Budget Advisory Committee and bring my experience in policy and advocacy to bear in order to strengthen, strengthen the city's support of underserved communities and strive for better outcomes for all of us. So thank you.
Thank you. We're very appreciative of your service and your willingness to be here this morning. With that, colleagues, any questions or thoughts? Commissioner Hardisty, I saw you had your hand raised earlier.
Actually, Mayor, I guess I will speak up. You know, I guess I'm, I'm, and I am thrilled that James Parker has agreed to be part of our Community Budget Advisory Committee. I, I guess I'm a little concerned about the slippery language that we're being asked to adopt today. There's a reason why the city of Portland wants people who live in the city of Portland to be engaged and deeply in our budgets, right? And what I know is the city of Portland goes out to 166 places. And so I'm just trying to figure out the problem that we're trying to fix with this amendment. Is it just to make language uniform? Or is it really because we can't find Black Indigenous and other people of color within the city of Portland boundaries? I'm confused by the change. That's it.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. I'll take a swing at that, and I'll turn it over to Director Kennard for her thoughts as well. First of all, I just want to reiterate that the city council is not required to accept any particular individual. If we decide that somebody is not connected enough or understanding of the needs of the community, we obviously do not have to accept that individual as a member of any board or commission. But what we have also found is that there are many people who work or lead organizations or are significantly connected with our community, even if they live just outside of the limits of the city of Portland. And they do have a perspective and an important connection that they can benefit from and bring to the community. So that, that is the thought predominantly behind this, but Director Kennard may have some technical reasons as well.
No, I, I think you, you said, said it well, Mayor. And I would just emphasize that it is removing, it is, it's meant to remove a barrier to participation, but not to be a blanket sort of acceptance. And the, the policy is still in place that the council, the mayor nominates, and the council will appoint every single member, and the intention is that there is a deep and meaningful connection to Portland as a prerequisite.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Commissioner Maps, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, first, let me start out by thanking James for his being willing to serve on our Budget Advisory Board. That is incredibly important work, and it's awfully time-intensive, too. So I really appreciate that. And Mr. Mayor and Director Kennard, I also really appreciate your explanation of the theory-driving ordinance 109. And I'll just, I'll just state, I kind of, I share some of Commissioner Hardisty's concerns here. I'm still kind of debating this issue in my own head. I kind of wish we had had more discussion about this before we got to this moment.
Very good. Any further discussion on either of these items? Is there public testimony, Kealan, on either item?
No one signed up.
All right, very good. Could you please call the roll on 109, the resolution?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hardisty had a question. Commissioner Hardisty.
Mayor, could we do the appointment without approving the resolution today? And I see Director Kennard shaking her head, no.
We, we cannot because Mr. Parker does not reside within the city of Portland.
Oh. I guess I I'm still concerned that I do not want people who live in the city of Portland to not be as equally vetted as people who are outside of the city of Portland. And again, I hate that we're doing this with Mr. Parker here because I want to assure him that this has absolutely nothing to do with him. We are being asked to change policy on the fly at the same time we're appointing you. So no disrespect to you intended, Mr. Parker. This is really about, is this a good policy? And will there be unintended consequences if, in fact, we move forward as intended? So based on what I know right now, unfortunately, I am required to vote no.
So colleagues, let let me jump in here. And I, Mr. Parker, I apologize to you. You should not have to see this dysfunctionality. But colleagues, this issue was raised in cab two weeks ago with your staffs. And so that that was the time for us to have this conversation. That was the time for council to interact and be informed and express any concerns that people might have had. There were no concerns expressed to my office subsequent to that presentation. It's my understanding that representatives of each of your offices were present. And so I'm not really sure what happened. I would encourage us to move forward on this.
Could we have a recess?
Let's do that. Let's take a ten minute recess. It's always good for the soul anyway. The current time is eleven sixteen. Let's reconvene.
Reporting stopped.
This was the subject of a February 7th memo that went to council. This was also the subject of a cab meeting two weeks ago. But it is very clear that there was some confusion on the part of some council offices about this item. As I'm often fond of saying, things move quickly here at City Hall and we all need to work hard to keep up. And but in the spirit of collaboration and making sure that we have a robust discussion about this, I would propose that we continue both of these items. Item 109, the resolution, and item 110, the report to next Wednesday. Kealan, do we have room in next Wednesday morning's agenda for this item?
We do, Mayor. We'll place them on the regular agenda.
Very good. So we will do that. That will give people more opportunity to have their questions addressed. I know Director Kennard, you have reached out to Mr. Parker and apologized to him on behalf of the council. Thank you, Mr. Parker, for your indulgence. And just so you all know, his response was he strongly supports a robust council discussion. So thank you for being a gentleman as well as a great community leader here in the city of Portland. Thank you for that. These two items are continued to next week. Next item, 111, a resolution and an appointment.
Appoint David Chen and David Knowles to the Charter Commission.
Colleagues, this resolution fills two vacancies on the Charter Commission created by the resignations of Stephen Fan and Carol Collie-Moore. We appreciate Commissioner Fans and Collie-Moore's service to the Charter Commission. They've already put in a substantial amount of work. I want to acknowledge that and thank them for it. Council approached this vacancy appointment in the same way we approached the initial appointments, meaning we used the original applicant pool and previously agreed upon shared selection criteria. I'm pleased to ensure that David Chen and David Knowles were selected to fill the vacancies. Sofia Alvarez, Charter Commission Engagement and Communications Coordinator, is here to give a little bit of background on our new commissioners before we invite them to say a few words. Sofia, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Hi, Commissioners. Yeah, for the record, my name is Sofia Alvarez Kestrel, and I'm the Charter Commission Engagement and Communications Coordinator. Yeah, so I'll share a little bit briefly about David Chen and David Knowles that are also here with us today. David Chen is a business attorney with more than 20 years of legal experience, most recently at the international law firm where he practiced in mergers and acquisitions. David also co-founded a bioinformatic startup and served in Civil Rights Division of the U.S. Department of Justice Litigation and Pleatment Discrimination Cases. He currently is a board member, Investment Committee Chair, and a Finance Committee Member at the Portland Community College Foundation, a board member of EcoTrust, and a co-chair of EcoTrust Investments. His other civic engagements have included volunteering with the Democratic National Committee's Voter Protection Hotline, poll observing in Arizona during the 2020 election, serving on the legal team that was awarded the American Lawyers 2013 Pro Bono Deal of the Year, and serving as Director, Secretary, and Interim Treasurer of the Homeless Prenatal Program, a social service agency in San Francisco. David has a BA in Public Policy from Duke University and a JD from Standard Law School. David Knowles has worked in politics, public policy, and law for over 40 years. He practiced law for nine years, was elected Metro Counselor, and served the city of Portland as Director Bureau of Planning. Most recently, he's worked as a land use and transportation consultant for cities and transit agencies in the Pacific Northwest. In both public and private work, he has been often called to help create consensus around major public policy issues where the participants have multiple and often conflicting interests. David and his wife Pam, who served two terms on the Board of Directors of the Portland Public Schools, live in Beaumont-Wilshire neighborhood. Their three sons attended Portland Public Schools and graduated from Grant High School. David has an undergraduate degree in economics and political science from Lewis and Clark College and a law degree from Northwestern School of Law. Both David Chen and David Knowles are here with us today, as I shared, and we invite them to share a few words with us about why they want to serve on the Charter Commission. David Chen?
Yes, good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. I am a Portland resident. My name is David Chen. Serving on the Charter Commission for me is a unique opportunity to influence directly the executive structure of our city government to affect how diverse communities and constituencies are heard and represented, and ultimately to impact how our government addresses the basic functions to which the city's citizens are entitled. And I'm excited by the opportunity to consider and recommend change in partnership with the other Charter Commissioners and the greater Portland community. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Hi, I'm David Knowles. Good, Mayor, members of the commission, nice to see you again. I'm honored to be considered for this. I think it's a really important undertaking by the city and by the Charter Commission. You know, my interest in this is really driven by the fact that we've got big, complicated problems in the city of Portland. And I think that the opportunity to adjust the former government, maybe the way in which we elect our elected officials, is one of the things we can do to begin to address those problems. It's changing the charter, changing governance, isn't going to solve all of these issues that we face today. But it's one of the tools that we have available to us. And I'm hoping that my experience in working in politics and public policy in the city of Portland for many years can be helpful in moving this conversation forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it very much, both of you. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Very good. This is a resolution. Is there any testimony on this item, Kealan?
No one signed up.
Excellent. Well, these are two fantastic, highly, highly qualified appointees. And I know both David Knowles and David Chen are very, very connected and busy people in this community. So that makes their service, I think, all the more impressive. Thank you both. With that, please call the rolls.
Rubio.
I want to thank the mayor and Sofia for bringing these really experienced and very impressive appointments forward. I also want to appreciate the hard work that the Charter Commission is carrying out. And I'm so grateful to David and David for stepping up to serve our city. I'm eager to continue following the work of the Charter Commission and to hear you both add your experience and perspective to the conversation. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thanks for bringing this forward. First, I want to take a moment to acknowledge both Carol Collie-Moore and Stephen Palm. That was a lot of work that they've done over the past, over a year, or two years. I don't know. I'm losing track. But I just want to acknowledge how great their service was on the Charter Review Commission. And wow, the Davids, here you are, and you just sold yourself so well to all of us. Thank you for your service. Careful what you wish for. Don't blame me, but just really dig in and have fun. And please speak up. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Yeah, I want to know what's been pumping up Commissioner Ryan today. He's got some lines today. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sofia, for these excellent candidates to serve on our Charter Review Commission. David Knowles and David Chen, I know neither of you are strangers to hard work. Neither of you are strangers to long hours, and neither of you are strangers to really listening and leaning in to community concerns. And you're going to add a lot to our Charter Commission. We have some fabulous community members who've been working very hard. And I see both of you as really unique individuals that will bring very unique perspectives that will only help make the Charter Commission better. Thank you for your willingness to serve, especially at this challenging time in our city. I think both of your steady leaderships will help us continue to do excellent work and bring to voters something they will be proud to support. I'm happy to vote aye.
Maps.
I join my colleagues in feeling gratitude towards Mr. Chen and Mr. Knowles for agreeing to serve on the Charter Review Commission. You guys are both exceptionally qualified. I am so glad to see you in this role. I believe the work that the Charter Review Commission is doing right now is some of the most important work being done in the city. I look forward to your contribution to that project and to the Charter Review Commission making Portland work better. For these reasons and more, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
These are two great appointments. I'm very happy to support these appointments. And I'm grateful to both then for being willing to serve. Thank you. I vote aye. The reports accept that the appointments are approved. Thank you. Item 112, please. This is an emergency ordinance.
Authorize Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the Northeast-Southeast 82nd Avenue Crossing Improvements Project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I am so excited to be helping us move forward Part One of our major 82nd Avenue redevelopment project. I am going to turn this over to the very capable Winston Sandino, who will walk us through this with a very brief presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner and Mayor. I think we have the presentation.
It's up.
Let's see. Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, we can move to the next slide. Yes. The, we're working right now on the 82nd Avenue crossings at Ash and Beach. These are two locations north of I-84 and south of I-84. This is a fixer-to-street project. The funding is 1.5 million to signalize crossings at these two locations. Next slide, please. The two locations, we are going to be installing signalized pedestrian crossings at each location. We will be completing new ADA ramps at each corner of the intersections. And we will be marking pedestrian crossing at both locations. The location of Beach, we will be installing an island due to volume of traffic to avoid conflicts with pedestrians. Next. So this is the location at 82nd and Beach. You can see that we're doing all the ADA ramps at each crossing, and we're building an island. This location will have a signalized pedestrian crossing. Next location, please. We're doing the same at 82nd Avenue and Ash. We're not doing an island at this location because of traffic. There is one island on the south side already. We're going to modify that and rebuild the ADA ramps. I just wanted to mention before we move to the next one, I just wanted to mention, and Ashley's going to talk about the right-of-way portion, but we're not really impacting anybody, major impacts on this project. We are just basically taking a little bit of permanent easement just to be able to build the ramps. The ADA ramps are very, very complicated to design, and we're going to have a lot of difficulties with utilities and very tight space to work. So we're just basically getting a little bit of right-of-way just to get the ADA ramps in compliance. Next slide, please. In the public involvement, as you may know, there was a huge planning process in 2018 that ODOT led. PBOAT was really involved in this planning process. And during that time, we identified several locations through the entire 82nd corridor. You all know that we will be getting a jurisdictional transfer on the project on 82nd. These are only two locations that we identified during that planning process. So we conducted interviews with property owners, business owners, community members, as well as market research to better understand barriers to redevelopment. We're currently working, we finished 30% plans. We're closing to 60% plans on the design. We're working with the adjacent property owners and business owners. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the designer who's doing this project is actually a consultant, and it's a minority-owned business, and they are doing a pretty good job on the design. And I think now I'm going to turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you, Winston. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ashley McLei. I'm with PBOAT Right-of-Way Acquisition. This agenda item 112 gives PBOAT the authority to compensate affected property owners for needed temporary and permanent easement rights, and if necessary, to condemn on those property rights for this 82nd Avenue Crossing Improvements Project. The permanent right-of-way and temporary rights will be needed from eight properties to support the construction of the project improvements. The permanent right-of-way will offer construction support of ADA and sidewalk facilities, and temporary easements will be used for construction support. All affected property owners have been informed of the project and the need for these rights, and they were also invited to attend this reading. And that concludes our presentation, and we can answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Let me just say, very well done.
Great presentation. Colleagues, any questions? Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Very good. This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for bringing this forward. And thank you, Winston and Ashley, for the presentation. Really excited about this project, and it will ensure living near 82nd, people will have the ability to walk, bike, and travel safely. So very excited. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner Hardesty, for bringing this forward. It's quite a journey to transform 82nd, and you're all over it. And thank you, Winston and Ashley, great presentation. I just love the graphics, actually. It's fun to look at blueprints. Anyway, I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Thank you, Winston and Ashley. Great presentation. And I just want to make sure people know this is one tiny piece of all the incredible opportunities that 82nd Avenue will present over the next few years. But I'm happy to see us every step of the way investing limited resources in ways that improve safety for all modes of transit in the city of Portland. And 82nd Avenue desperately needs it. I'm happy to vote aye.
Maps. Wheeler.
This is further proof that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. There's been a lot of discussion in the last week and a half, two weeks, about the need for the city of Portland to invest in infrastructure that would help improve safety across the city. And it's somewhat disconcerting that when a proposal is vetted that does not overtly address that issue, people panic because they think we've forgotten about it. It's nice to continue to see the work that's being done along one of our busiest and frankly, most dangerous traffic corridors, 82nd Avenue, and to acknowledge that this is one piece of a larger project, as Commissioner Hardesty just mentioned, but it's also one part of a larger infrastructural investment all across the city to improve public safety. So I applaud the aggressive efforts of Commissioner Hardesty and her team on this, as well as PBOAT. I look forward to continuing to support this important kind of infrastructural investment across our city. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, item 113.
Authorize bid solicitation and contracting with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for construction of the North Jansen West of North Pavilion Avenue Water Main Improvement Project for an estimated cost of $1,326,698.
Colleagues, this is a non-emergency ordinance. Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Colleagues, the Water Bureau has approximately 2,250 miles of pipe in its water distribution system. Now, some of these pipes are old and obsolete, which can lead to leaks, breaks, and diminished water quality. That's why the Water Bureau uses asset management, risk management, and financial planning to determine when it's time to replace its aging infrastructure. The ordinance before us today is part of that effort. This ordinance authorizes the Bureau to replace some of the worst pipes in our water distribution system. There have been leaks in these pipes. These pipes are made of substandard material. These pipes are located in areas that will liquefy during a big earthquake, and these pipes fail to meet state and Water Bureau quality standards. On the other hand, this pipe replacement project accomplishes at least three important things. First, replacing these pipes will improve seismic resiliency. Second, replacing these pipes will bring this infrastructure into compliance with the Water Bureau's seismic implementation plan and the 2013 Oregon Resilience Plan. And third, this project will bring Water Bureau services into compliance with Oregon Health Authority requirements. Here to tell us more about this important effort, we have Jody Inman, Chief Engineer for the Water Bureau. Jody, welcome.
Thank you. Kealan, could you start the presentation? And I'll thank you to Commissioner Maps. You always do such a wonderful job introducing our projects that you may recognize some of those important points in the presentation. So I'll go through it quickly, as I know we're getting short on time. Can you go ahead and go to the next slide? So as Commissioner Maps described, and I wanted to get a little bit of background, this project is a project in our Distribution Mains Program, which is one of the larger programs at the Portland Water Bureau. This program has over 2,000 feet of, or excuse me, miles of water main in the distribution system. We do use asset management to identify projects based condition, risk, and financial implications. The Asset Management Plan for Distribution Mains identified a main replacement goal per year of around 35,000 up to 50,000 feet. You will be seeing before you more contract distribution mains that we will be doing in addition to the work that our crews already do. The goals of these contract distribution main projects are twofold. One is to increase the footage replaced every year to help us meet that asset management goal. And second, it is to be able to provide different-sized contracting opportunities to the community, particularly co-bid firms. When we look at our Distribution Mains contract projects to bring before you, we are seeking to look for projects that fit within the PCDP program and also prime opportunities to help support co-bid firms. Next slide, please. So why this particular water main? Not to reiterate what Commissioner Maps just said, but this project was identified in addition to the Asset Management Plan as part of the 2013 Hayden Island Master Plan. This project will replace 2,200 feet of new main. It will improve seismic resiliency with earthquake-resistant pipe, which I will show you more about on the next slide. It will protect the public water system against contamination with the installation of those backflow devices. It will also improve fire protection with the addition of a fire hydrant. The new pipe will help make sure the water is safe and reliable in this area for generations to come. Next slide. What is earthquake-resistant pipe? We also call this earthquake-resistant ductile iron pipe, or ERDIP, if you should ever hear that and wonder what it means. So earthquake-resistant pipe is a key component of the Water Bureau's seismic implementation plan. As part of our Water Bureau seismic study, we had some mapping done to identify areas of the Portland area where it was susceptible to high levels of lateral spread or also liquefaction, which can lead to subsidence, or when the ground actually settles. Our typical water main installation standards have us putting our pieces of pipe together and then restraining them so that they don't flex and don't pull apart. But this becomes challenging and can lead to breaks in areas where there is anticipated to be a large amount of land movement. Earthquake-resistant pipe is a different type of pipe joint construction. The joints have flexibility. They can be pulled apart. They can be pushed together, and they can also rotate on their axis. This pipe material, these joints, was initially led by the Kubota Membring Corporation. They're the first manufacturers. There are US manufacturers of these types of joints also. In what you had before, you were a couple pictures of this earthquake-resistant pipe in action. One is a demonstration of a pipe that was put together as one solid piece, but when you pull on the end, the pipe flexes and bends and is able to stay connected. And then there's an actual picture on the right of an example from Japan where they have had subsidence, and they've had the ground underneath an existing pipe as part of one of the recent earthquakes move. And the pipe that is shown there is still sealed. It is still in action. It is still providing water to the customers in the area, which is a key component of being prepared for how to recover after a seismic event. Next slide. One of the key components on the Jansen Ave project, Jansen Ave, is on Hayden Island. And Hayden Island is a unique part of our system or part of the city in how it was developed. It was brought into the city in the late 80s, including the Jansen Beach Water System. The Hayden Island area is not like the rest of the city in that there are not many public rights of way. There are many easements. You can see in the larger picture, in the middle, the sort of yellow shaded areas are existing easements that cover rights of way as well as many utilities. The Water Bureau project is primarily within the existing right-of-way. However, there is need to coordinate with two property owners for additional easements. Those include temporary construction easements to be able to access the main. They include and/or to be able to stage construction equipment for that work, as well as temporary easements for access and to install the new hydrant. The Water Bureau does have condemnation authority, but we like to do everything that we can to avoid using it. We have been successful in negotiating one of the property owners, and we are currently, right now, working with the second property owner to come to a resolution that we hope will be agreeable to all. I want to assure everybody that while we are asking for the authority today to be able to go to bid for this work, we will not be going to bid until all property issues are resolved. Next slide. I promised it would be short and sweet. So again, our request is to authorize the bid solicitation for the North Jansen Ave West Pavilion Water Main Project at an estimated cost of $1,326,698 with an anticipated start date of late this fall or early winter. With that, last slide. I'll take any questions.
Colleagues, any questions? Commissioner Maps.
To the slide that shows the bendy pipe?
Slide four?
I think so. Perfect. I don't really have a question. I just really wanted to highlight this for my colleagues on council and for those folks watching at home. It's easy not to appreciate how remarkable this is. We're replacing these old pipes with really cutting-edge, modern pipes that are earthquake-resistant. Here, we're looking at a pipe that actually can bend, and you can see the bend. Here, we're looking at a pipe that actually can bend, and you can see the bend right there. We all spend a lot of time in Portland, kind of trying to prepare for the big one, and this technology that we're looking at today is, you know, part of the next generation of infrastructure, which will help our city survive when that, you know, nine point something earthquake finally hits. I'm just really proud to be associated with this and want to congratulate the Bureau for being so innovative on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any testimony on this item, Kealan?
Yes, we have one person signed up.
Very good. Let's hear from them, please.
Ron Schmidt.
Hey, Ron.
Ron, you're muted.
Ron Schmidt here, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. A special thank you to Commissioner Maps staff, who at the very last moment was able to do some last minute efforts for us, and we're very grateful for that. We're also grateful to the Portland Water Bureau for all their efforts. We believe that this pipe needs to be replaced. However, we're very opposed to the process that's being used in it. My name is Ron Schmidt, and I'm a resident, part owner of Jansen Beach Mortgage, a floating home mortgage in North Portland that's comprised of 175 homes, some of which are the most reasonably priced homes in the city, and whose origin was actually from homeless building structures on log rafts in the last century. As you can see behind me, we are the ultimate in urban infill with only a few feet between our homes. We're comprised of a significant number of retirees, low income residents, along with working folks. Our homes and our property are the main financial investment and shelter in our lives. I testify against agenda item 113 and ask that you table this funding until an agreeable solution can be made in the taking of our property. I ask that if you do approve this funding, that you instruct your staff to work diligently to find solutions other than the taking of property from citizens when that taking is not needed. And if the taking must occur, a valuation of $80,000 for a half mile of riverfront seriously needs to be recalculated. Lastly, I ask that you consider moving the fire hydrant inspection back to the fire department and away from the Water Bureau, given the fire department is more able to do so without the taking of this property. If you look at your impact statement in your package, it states that all easements are currently in negotiation and will be in place prior to bidding the project. What's not in the statement is that a huge hammer, Mnet Domain, is being used to obtain a permanent easement over most of our property that is not needed, has not been needed for decades, and would stop us, citizens and homeowners, from doing future developments such as carports, garages, multi-habitational under the Hayden Island Plan. And the worst case scenario, as a risk manager over three decades of my life, is worrying about the worst case scenario, that being that the state declares that floating homes are environmentally insensitive and they non-renew our submerged land leases. At that point in time, it's critical for us to find a higher and better use for what property we have left over, or you have 175 bankrupt families in the city of Portland. It's been told to us, the reason for this easement is to guarantee access to a maintenance employee to test and maintain the hydrants, given our security fences and gates at each end of the property. This project is a replacement and not a significant change from the existing lines. No significant change from the system has been inspected or maintained for decades. As a matter of fact, Station 17, Captain Hayes, tells us that the fire department has no problem getting in for inspections or test runs with their huge fire engines, both now and when the fire department was responsible for the fire hydrant inspections. Police have no problem getting in with their vehicles. In fact, we give codes to our gates to any city employees or agencies that want them. And the Water Bureau has not complained in the last several decades that we've had the security fences in place. We have, to the credit of the Water Bureau, tried to amicably work with them, including the rights of laypeople and the city attorney. We have suggested as laypeople.
Excuse me, Mayor, we're, excuse me, we're almost two minutes over, and I just want to be respectful of everyone having three minutes to testify, and you have exceeded that time, sir.
Commissioner Hardesty, I acquiesce. I didn't realize there's a time constraint on it. We do ask that you either table this or instruct your staff to do everything possible not to do Mnet Domain and work with the citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Commissioner Maps?
Ron, thank you so much for your testimony today. What I'd like to do now is invite Jody to weigh in here and see if she can place this issue into some context.
Thank you. Could we potentially pull up slide number five from the presentation? I want to thank Mr. Schmidt for presenting, and I appreciate the acknowledgement, and I appreciate also all that you have done to work with us. What I am not showing here is that the yellow shaded area is an existing easement. What you see coming down are existing Water Bureau owned fire service lines and fire hydrants. Those exist on a mortgage property, and we have an easement to be able to access those. It is important for the Water Bureau to have a permanent accessible easement at all times to be able to maintain, replace, repair, or work on our assets. We had originally, because there is now a fence that sort of borders the area between the yellow and the pavement, the parking that is on the mortgage property, we had gone in with condemnation authority to seek in access, a permanent access easement on the hydrant side of the fence. And I believe after working with Mr. Schmidt, we are seeking other alternatives such as being able to ensure that there is ability to get to our hydrants in the existing easements by working on the fence that is currently blocking it or looking at other options. So there are alternatives to be had here, and I expect that we will have continued dialogue with Mr. Schmidt to work those out. And our current position, I think, is that we will be moving away from taking the condemnation and working towards using the existing access as we have.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you, Ron. I want to encourage all parties here to continue to dialogue around this issue. I'm confident that we can work something out.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Jody, are you working with the Fire Bureau and addressing the issues around the hydrants?
I have to check into that typically because they are Water Bureau owned, that it's our responsibility to test and maintain them and replace them. So the ability of a fire hydrant to access or the fire department to access them is sort of secondary, but that could be.
Not to us if there's a fire there.
Exactly, which is, I think, Mr. Schmidt addressed that they have access to get to them in case of a fire. What is needed is the permanent clear access to be able to do the maintenance.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion on this item? If not, this is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you, everybody. And with that, Kealan, we've completed our work for this morning.
We have, Mayor.
All right, we're adjourned. I'll see you all at 2:00 PM. All right, we're adjourned, I'll see you all at 2:00 PM.